The April 15th, 2019 meeting of the Anarona County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening I will be giving the invocation. I ask that everyone bow their heads. We meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well. We represent all members of the community fairly to make good decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future and the rights and needs of both individuals and the community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. We ask this in your name. Amen. We'd like to invite some scout leaders up from Troop 414, 995, and 855. They're going to lead us in the pledge. So we'll give them a second to come forward. Whenever you guys are ready, you may begin.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to apply to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending this evening. Madam Secretary, could you please read the ethics statement?
The Ethics Commission is asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission is asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. At this time, we have a presentation. I would ask Ms. Tate if you would just rise for a second. I want to take a moment, and Ms. Tate, in honoring her years of service and recognition, she's been here for 12 years. Now, this is my second term on the council, and we have some other folks that are going to join us in some words today. But I want to present this citation for your grateful work, being appreciative of when I called you on weekends, time, and your dedication. Anarona County, particularly the citizens, benefited from all your hard work and the time that you spent with your family, and I do want to present this to you, and I want to thank you again for everything.
Thank you.
I know some of my former colleagues, Mr. Walker and Mr. Smith, would also like to come forward and share a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. It's weird to be standing on this side of the dais again, but I just want to express my appreciation to you, Ms. Tate, for your years of service on the council. For those that don't know, I served here for eight years. You were the Legislative Council for the entire time. We worked very closely together on a number of issues. You were always there, always willing to lend a listening ear, give good advice, do all the research that you needed to do to be informed about a topic, most of the time more informed than I was in a lot of cases. And just thank you for all of your dedication and loyalty. And, you know, I think I've always said that your job here at the council is probably one of the most difficult ones because you have seven bosses essentially. I know Joanne does too, but they're not all pounding on you all the time for legislation, and that is something that you handled with class and with style, and you always kept that wall of separation between each of us very well, and protected each of our interests and protected each of our conversations and confidentiality. So I just want to say thank you for your service to the county, to us as a council, and to myself personally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and councilmembers. Almost six years, five and a half, and some change. You served as a legislative advisor in giving us advice when it comes to legal matter. I think, I don't know if you remember the first conversation we had. Joanne, I believe you were there, and Beth was there. We were in an office in the back, and this was in March of 2012. And we sat there, and we talked about the role of a council member. And one of the things that I had brung up was our job is to make sure that we pass, you know, quality legislation, things like that. But the biggest thing that came out of that conversation was we talked about the institution, about that's what we're here to protect, and you have served in that capacity to help us protect the institution. It's bigger than any of the councilmembers that are serving today and those who have served in the past. And forever, our county is going to have your name etched next to ours as somebody who helped us guard the ship. And so I'm so grateful that you served over the last five and a half years, almost six years while I was there, because you made me a better legislator, because the legislation that I put forth, I knew when it came to you that you were going to be honest and open with me. There was legislation that I didn't put out, because you were like, Pete, you can't do this. And, you know, the Marine in me just wanted to charge forward and push down the wall. I didn't care. But from a legal standpoint, you kept me grounded, and you kept me guarded. And I'm so grateful that the members up here have you, or have had you to sort of listen to, and to hopefully whoever fills your shoes, they're going to have really, really tough time filling those shoes. But I am just so grateful for the time that we spent together, and from the bottom of my heart, the members in District 1, and to Sarah and everybody else that I represented, they benefited from your service, just as they benefited from my service. So thank you for the time that we had to share together. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you again for sharing those comments, and thank you again, Ms. Tate. We appreciate your service. We're going to now do the invitation of audience. We'll now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I do have one person signed up here, Mr. Robert Smith. If you would come forward, please. As you're doing so, again, this is two minutes. If you state your name and address for the record, and then you may begin.
Hello. My name's Robert Smith. I live at 1487 Chatham Court in Crofton, Maryland. Here on behalf of the Board of Crofton First, I'm just basically, it was brought to our attention recently that the recent site plans that were submitted to the County Office of Planning and Zoning for the, what's commonly known as the enclave development, was not made available at the Crofton Public Library after it had been kind of expressed that it would be. It's currently only available to the public right now at the Crofton, or the, I mean, the Crofton Community, or Crofton Town Hall, and that's only during, and you can only access it by appointment between 9:00 to 5:00. And that's making it very difficult for folks, and we've had a lot of people express interest in wanting to see these documents to review the site plan. So we're just asking, we have talked to Director Hager about possibly making that available, and we're just hoping that those plans will be made available at the public library, which is a little bit more accessible for most of the folks in Crofton. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who did not sign up and wish to speak? Please come to the table, and you have your name and address. I see two folks. Mr. Enright and Ms. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, ladies of the staff. My name is Patrick Enright. I live at Huntwood Drive in Gamberles. Well, I'm here tonight to point some praise at your departing Legislative Council, to our county council, and to also endorse the fact that I've been here all 12 years, she's been here, I've been coming to the council, and have witnessed this dedication that Councilman Walker talked about in spades. I wish to say that there was one time when she had 12 bosses, and that was in 2012 when the Charter Revision Commission was convened, and I was a member of that. And I just want to thank you for your dedication to that commission, in addition to all your other legislative duties. Many times, as a private citizen, I would ask you for advice on a legislative issue or a piece of legislation. You never hesitated to answer my questions, and many times you helped me keep me from making a complete fool of myself. So I want to thank you. Thank you very much for your dedication and your help to all of us on the Charter Revision Commission. And just to conclude, I say Godspeed, fair winds at your back, calm seas ahead, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Enright. Ms. Johnson.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. It's hard to follow anybody else, you know, these people with their recognition and acknowledgement of the importance of Ms. Tate to this whole county. A lot of people really have no concept of the importance of her role and her contributions. They know you guys, because you guys go out and say, hey, I'm here, and I want to run for office, and I want you to vote for me. But she doesn't get to do that. She works diligently and quietly behind the scenes. And so it's really very important, and we're very fortunate we've had her. And so I do want to express my appreciation and encourage others to express theirs. Tonight, I actually sent you an email, because I told you about my problems, about how they, you know, the county, you know, charged me with having junk and debris in my yard. They sent me, they sent the notice of the trial to Julie Johnson, PO Box, but they left out the number, Annapolis, Maryland. So I didn't get it, so I didn't go to court, and I got, I was found guilty because I wasn't there. It's called a default judgment, and they fined me $500 plus $45 in court costs. And so what I sent you tonight, well, okay, so the question is, was this just an ordinary accident, which is what you want to call it? You want to presume this was just an innocent mistake. But then, sometimes you kind of have to wonder. So what I sent you tonight is three packets of papers that I wound up having to file to the Chief Judge of the District Courts in Maryland, because my neighbors had, you know, asked for a petition to enjoin me from seeking the assistance of any law enforcement agency regarding their parking on my property. And they enjoined--
Ms. Johnson, can you summarize?
So I had no protection for more than a year, and they ordered the Anarona County Police not to provide any protection for me, which was really hard. And they still have not issued one more, not one, parking ticket since. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Appreciate it. I did want to respond, Mr. Smith, the library plans that you referred are going to be available Thursday. Just want to make sure that we get that out in the public record, and that was for the enclave. So, thank you. Seeing, thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, public audience, the invitation audience now closed. Is there any item, any councilmember would like to place on the agenda? I know Mr. Volkey, you may begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to note for the record that I will be withdrawing Bill 2119 in light of some guidance that I've received from the Office of Law at this point in time. It looks like that bill may need some more work, so we will take a look at that and then hopefully come back again in the future with a new product. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Volkey. May I have a motion that partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of April 1st, 2019.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Pruski at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Pastor Doug Baumann, Lakeshore Baptist Church Pasadena, and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 1st, 2019?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
One correction. It should be Pastor Doug Bond, not Bohan. I think he has an N on the end. I just wanted to clarify that.
Can we make that a technical?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right. May I have a motion to approve those minutes with that technical correction?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of April 1st, 2019 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 2519, an ordinance concerning current expense budget transfer of appropriation, Chief Administrative Office, Department of Public Works, Office of Transportation. Bill Number 2619, an ordinance concerning approval of lease agreement for Andover Equestrian Center. Bill Number 2719, an ordinance concerning approval of lease agreement for Andy Smith Equestrian Center. Bill Number 2819, an ordinance concerning special community benefit districts procedure for establishment.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Just for the record, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to Bill Number 2819.
Okay. Madam Secretary, do you have that for the record?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, introductions of resolutions. Madam Secretary, please read the title of resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 1519, resolution appointing members to the Anarona County Gun Violence Prevention Task Force. Resolution Number 1619, resolution urging the county executive to respond to a request for documentation from the county auditor.
Okay. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution Numbers 1519 and 1619?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Point of order?
Yes.
Don't you need to make the motion separately per resolution?
No.
No. We do them as a block. If there's going to be a suspended rules for hearing the vote, I've done it like that. That's the normal process.
Well, I object, but fine.
Okay, do we have a motion? Madam Secretary?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Call the roll. Oh, sorry, call the roll.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
For in the affirmative, three and the negative, the motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution Number 15 and Resolution Number 16 out of order is passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 1519.
Resolution Number 1519, resolution appointing members to the Anarona County Gun Violence Prevention Task Force.
Okay, I don't believe the administration needs to come forward, but this is a bill sponsored by Ms. Pickard, Ms. Lacy, Ms. Rodvian, and myself. Ms. Pickard, I don't know if you wanted to speak on your nominee for this committee, or?
I can.
Okay.
We're appointing, or this resolution appoints Mr. Chris Moore from the Glen Burnie area. Mr. Chris Moore is a parent of two school-aged children and comes to this issue with a look to our future and protecting our youth.
Okay, and in addition, the other appointee that was brought forward was sponsored by myself, Ms. Korbelak, also a parent, former board member, and actually employee, or former employee with the Federal Department of Corrections. Is there any discussion on Resolution 1519? Ms. Hare?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, seeing no discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 1519.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative, Resolution Number 1519 is adopted.
Resolution Number 1619. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1619. Mr. Volkey is the sponsor.
Resolution Number 1619, resolution urging the county executive to respond to a request for documentation from the county auditor.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just briefly, this resolution has its genesis in the auditor's request for information with respect to capital budget projects which are going to be part of the upcoming budget. We are about two weeks away from when the budget is to be presented, and at this point, the county auditor, the council, county auditor, excuse me, still does not have that information. This was originally requested on the 19th of February. This information has been determined to be available directly through the Department of Public Works, and when Madam Auditor requested this to be provided by Department of Public Works through a mechanism that she was able to find, that was not turned over to her, because apparently there is some statement that it has to be run through the Budget Office before it can be provided to the county auditor. As the fiscal watchdog for the county, this is extremely concerning to me. This is an institutional issue. I do not view this as a Republican or a Democrat issue. This is an issue that deals with the institution and the legitimacy of this body as the county council, which has a fiduciary duty to oversee the county budget. Consequently, lacking this information is significantly handicapping the county auditor's ability to move forward with having the information necessary for this council to make good decisions. So this resolution is calling on the county executive through the Budget Office or any other departments that are necessary to immediately produce this information to the county auditor, which is required for her to do her job. I would ask all my colleagues to support this.
Any further discussion? I do want to chime in, because I think it's important for the public record that the county auditor, myself, and the administration have a discussion. Respectfully, I'm going to vote against this resolution for two reasons. Number one, I think it's a little premature, because I think that things need to be worked out. Also, under the prior administration, they did submit things that relate. I don't disagree with the auditor's suggestions, but I do believe it would be more productive in the future to maybe look at an ordinance when we get counsel that relates to someone actually limiting the council or public's authority to review documents. I certainly understand. So at this point, again, I'm going to vote against the resolution. I respect my colleagues' concerns, but I think at this point, it's a little premature. We do have other folks, Councilwoman Hare?
I'm just wondering, and I don't know if perhaps the administration can tell us this, but do we have a firm deadline by which the administration has pledged to provide this information?
Evening. For the record, Pete Barron with the county executive. May 1st is the deadline when we introduce the budget. However, we are working diligently to get information before that date.
Okay, but do you have a deadline by which you've pledged to get it to the county auditor?
As soon as possible.
Okay. And is there any reason, what is the rationale for not providing the information when requested back in February, and then again in March, and now today even?
There's a couple of reasons we're not, one, we have technical issues without providing certain information. We are still making our budget decisions, so providing bad information that changes will lead to a lot of wasted effort. We are working hard to get that information as soon as possible. I know there's a meeting this coming Wednesday where internally the administration is working on providing as much as possible to the auditor. We want to be extremely transparent. In fact, the county executive met with the auditor back in February, and we've had discussions as recently as last week attempting to come up with some information.
So can we just unpack that for a question, for a couple of seconds? I heard technical issues, and then also the information requested. You haven't finalized your budget stuff. What are the technical issues that you're referring to?
Well, so, and I think there's probably, I'm probably going to misstate this a little bit, so I apologize, but I think the, when there's a project that is in the second or third year of funding, it's a little bit clearer, right? But if there's a new project, or if there are projects that we are making changes to, so you can have a mix of the technical questions as well as the changes as the administration makes budget decisions.
So isn't it possible to at least provide partial information on those?
We are working, we are working on doing that as soon as possible.
But you haven't done it yet?
No.
So the projects that were in their second or third year, that would be sort of these easy low-hanging fruit, even those have not been given to the auditor yet?
Again, we are working to provide that as soon as possible.
But to my understanding, there's no technical issue with why you couldn't provide those?
I'm not an expert on each and every project, but we are working to provide information as soon as we can.
Okay. To my understanding, the report that the auditor was asking for was actually run last week. Is that accurate?
I'm not sure on which report you're referring to.
It was a report directly from the software that is used for the so-called child projects and whatnot.
If it is what you're referring to, there is some draft numbers in that report.
Does that report, I mean, to my understanding, the numbers that are being requested don't have any bearing on what your ultimate budget requests may be. They're just the estimates and whatnot, the actual numbers, the actual data of what it would cost if you chose to put it in your budget, not necessarily how much you're putting in your budget. Is that, is that a fair assessment? Okay.
Again, we are working to provide the information that will be in our budget as soon as possible.
But we're not asking for the information that will be in your budget. The county auditor has asked for the estimates of the project, not necessarily what you're going to put in your budget. This is two different data points, and I'm just, I'm having trouble understanding, because we as the council, six of us are new. This is very difficult for us, and the information that's going to be provided to the auditor is critically important to our being able to make our determinations up here when we actually strike the budget. And if the county auditor can't do her job because she doesn't have the information, I'm trying to figure out why at least some of this information couldn't be given already. It's a little frustrating for me.
And with all due respect, we are, the administration is new as well, and we are trying to provide this information as fast as we can.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Barron, a question for you about the administration and these technical difficulties. Are you aware that on the 10th of April, 2019, that the county auditor spoke with a Mr. Drebek in DPW, which is Department of Public Works, and was able to obtain one of the estimates that she needs from the e-Builder system? Were you aware of that?
No.
Okay. Were you aware that in fact, the county auditor on that same day, in speaking with Mr. Drebek in DPW, learned that she could get a full project report in an Excel document for all of the information that she required?
Again, we haven't released our budget.
Okay.
And we, and we fully intend to provide all the information that the auditor does require.
Understood, and I appreciate that, but I guess my point is, one of the administration's statements has been that there's technical, there is a technical issue in providing this, and what I'm making the point of is that as of April the 10th, 2019, the auditor was able to discover that there is actually no technical impediment to getting this information. There is a logistical impediment, because the administration's failed to provide it.
Chris Phipps, the Director of Public Works, you know, we're kind of getting into difference without delineation between the terms here. The information that was provided in that report was accurate at the time it was developed.
Which was when, Mr. Phipps?
Well, it was when it was printed, April 10th.
Okay.
So what we're trying to avoid is the miscommunication that can occur if, on April 11th, a bid is opened, a new stage design submittal is provided, we go from 30% to 60%, and now we get a new estimate that has to be updated. Meanwhile, the auditor has old estimate data. So that is a logistical issue, that, you know, when we're running probably 1,000 child projects, if you add them all up, any number of those could find themselves in that same predicament. So we are trying to avoid that confusion, that miscommunication, and the other is just the issue of, you know, these are all pre-decisional, and I have to honor the confidence and the privilege of the county executive in not releasing, we can't release, information that's pre-decisional as it relates to the budget.
Mr. Chairman, point of order?
Yes.
I'd like to ask Mr. Swain and Ms. Blair to come up.
Please.
I move to close the debate, because this is not a legal procedure. The first motion, as I recall, was a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of taking matters out of order. There needed to be a separate motion to suspend the rules to actually hear each resolution. And given that the first one, the vote was four to three, we didn't have the five votes necessary under Rule 1104A to be able to do that. So we need to go back and somehow not be having this debate.
Okay, before we go to that, Ms. Blair, Mr. Swain, and I want Ms. Tate to also chime in.
Right, so these resolutions were introduced tonight, and in order to hear the resolutions tonight, there should have been a motion to hear the resolutions on the night of introduction.
Ms. Tate, go ahead.
The request is to make the hearing vote on the resolutions out of order and suspend the rules. So was, that's what I thought the chairman said.
I heard a motion was to hear them out of order, which to me means hear them before hearing the bills.
Can--
I think I read the motion to suspend the rules to vote on it out of order. However, it was a vote of four.
Okay. I guess we will move to close debate then, based upon Ms. Lacy's--
Well, point of order, then, I think that invalidates the vote on the gun task force 1519 that we just took.
Yes, so you'll have to vote on them next time, then.
Correct. So the motion is on the floor to close debate due to procedural action. Ms. Tate, what do we do to proceed with that? Is that a roll call vote, or simply aye, or?
You get into motion, just roll call it as a roll call vote, please.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to close debate. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll on the motion?
Ms. Rodvian?
I'm sorry, I need clarification on what we're voting on. I'm not the only one, right?
Sure.
The councilwoman from District 1 has indicated that she's making a motion to close the debate. As the motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on it tonight did not have the five votes--
I'm not the only one, right?
Sure.
The councilwoman from District 1 has indicated that she's making a motion to close the debate. As the motion to suspend the rules to hear and vote on it tonight did not have the five votes necessary, the items have been introduced, and you can vote on them at the next meeting.
Well, point of order, then, Mr. Chair, is a motion necessary if we didn't have the appropriate number to even debate these in the first place? We don't even need to close debate?
You proceeded to this point, so you want to have something in the record, so.
Yeah, just to remove the current, or prior motions. Does that help, Ms. Rodvian?
So, simply stated, this is a motion to close debate.
Correct.
Thank you.
And you won't be voting on it, you can hear, you have to, you'll hear it again next meeting. You can discuss it in the next meeting. The one is a motion of a point which, which doesn't really have a hearing, but the second one, you could open and have a hearing for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
It's required by the code for five votes, so aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Ms. Drivolke?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, the motion to close debate is passed.
Okay, so Resolution 1519 and 1619 will be heard at the following meeting. Okay? Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1419.
Bill Number 1419, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Farm Breweries in Residential Districts.
Okay, the hearings include Ms. Fiedler as the sponsor. If you'd like to add any additional comments?
Yes, I, we've discussed this at length in work session. This bill is intended to give farm breweries in RLD and R1 similar allowances as far as requiring a certain amount of acres, road access requirements, and limiting events to weekends and federal holidays in R1 specifically. I understand that there are some concerns with R1, and I will be offering an amendment at the appropriate time.
Okay, the administration, any further response?
Nothing further to add.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, Madam Secretary, could please read the title of Bill 1419?
It would be.
Oh, since it's already written?
It's only up for vote, so.
Okay, well, then, we will move to the First Amendment, Amendment Number 1. Amendment Number 1, could you please read that, Madam Secretary?
Amendment Number 1, this amendment requires that a farm brewery in a R1 residential district also be located on land assessed by the state as a farm or agricultural use.
Okay, is there a motion to approve this amendment?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Fiedler?
This amendment was brought about after lengthy discussions with the administration and planning and zoning. Ultimately, farm wineries in R1 are allowed to be on parcels of 10 acres plus. I felt that it was important to give farmers an opportunity who want to invest in farm breweries the same options, understanding that there are some concerns. We, I have put this amendment in requiring in an agricultural assessment by the state. That's essentially 19 parcels currently in our county that are assessed agriculturally, who have 10 acres or more, are on minor arterial roads or greater. So, I feel that this addresses any concerns in R1, and I just want to remind everybody that the farms in R1 are typically farms who have been there for 100-plus years, and they've gone from many, many acres down to 30, 20, 10. And I think that they should be allowed to diversify, and this is an opportunity to preserve what farmland we have left in our county.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any discussion for the administration on the current amendment on the floor?
Nothing further to add.
Okay. I don't see any more lights. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number 1 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We have Amendment Number 2. Could you please read that in the record?
Amendment Number 2, this amendment repeals the event and activity restrictions included in the conditional use requirement for a farm brewery.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, this is Councilwoman Lacy's amendment?
Now that, now that we're all paying attention, I am offering this amendment the purposes to strike subsections 5 and 6, or, I'm sorry, to repeal. That, the reason for that is because, under the state code, alcoholic beverages article, section 2, 210E1, that pertains to Class 8 farm breweries, and it provides that, notwithstanding any other local law, a license holder may exercise the privileges of Class 8 farm brewery license. Those privileges are enumerated in sections a couple further down from that part of the code, and there's also another section in the alcoholic beverages article, section 11-401, which is the Anarodto County, sort of county-local law implementing the, implementing the, this part of the alcoholic beverages article, which requires that all the enumerated sections there, including the one that I just read, section 2-210E1, apply in the county without exception or variation. Therefore, these two subsections have been preempted explicitly, expressly by state law, and we should take them out of our code.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lacy. Any discussion, the administration's response to Amendment Number 2?
For the record, Peter Barron with the County Executive, no, nothing further to add. Commending Councilwoman for spotting an outdated section of our code.
Great. Seeing no further discussion? I'm sorry, Ms. Fiedler?
So, in 2015, when farm breweries were added to the code, this was, this limitation for events was added after some folks from South County came out and expressed some concern for, from agricultural areas turning into commercial uses. So, are we going against what the concerns of those in South County felt, and also the folks who came out and testified in concern of my bill?
Mr. Chairman, may I respond to that?
Sure, Ms. Lacy.
I asked Ms. Corvey to review the legislative history on that question, to confirm when was the, when did the preemption become part of state law? It became part of state law in 2012. It was then, there was a major codification of the article from 2B to Article 2 is what it now is for the alcoholic beverages. So, it's actually been there the whole time, but now, in the current form, if you were to pull, pull that legislation, you would see it as section 2-210E1. And so, the only remedy, not, not with any disrespect to those residents and the constituent concerns, but it's an issue they have to take to the delegation in the General Assembly.
And have we, for the existing farm breweries, has there been an issue with the current restriction of having six events?
May I respond as well, Mr. Chairman? I looked into that. The section 2-210 permits Class 8 farm breweries to hold up to 12 promotional events per year, as well as multi-brewery festivals. All of that is provided for under a license that is issued by the Comptroller, and each farm has to apply for a permit to hold those events and festivals from the Comptroller. So, until, if a farm brewery were in our county and held more than the six that we purport to limit them to, it's the Comptroller who has the authority to, to do anything about it, and they wouldn't do anything until someone applied for more than 12, because that's the state limit. So, we don't have any enforcement power with regard to that limit of six.
So, knowing, knowing and understanding that we have had communities in South County and communities that would have potentially farm breweries in the future, state that conditional use with increased events is a concern, and that is the whole reason behind the bill being written the way it is. So, I know that we have discussed here concerns that you've had, so if this is an attempt in any way to eventually move farm breweries in R1 to be special exceptions, I would encourage my colleagues to vote against this amendment because we are just adding roadblocks for farmers in the entire county. And if we want to see them turning into developments, vote, vote for it.
And with respect to my colleague, I simply think this amendment recognizes what unfortunately should have been recognized quite a while ago, which is not at all reflective of the hard work that you have put into this bill, and I still very much support how, what can we do to increase the viability of farm breweries in our county. But I cannot countenance an amendment that is actually expressly contrary to state law, and when I observe that, I've tried to remedy this as soon as possible, so.
I believe Mr. Volkey, and then we'll go to the side.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Swain, this question would be for you. Do you agree that the state code preempts the county and that we are not allowed to be stricter than the state code?
Greg Swain, County Attorney. In this instance, I do agree, and the reasoning is, there are certain areas of law that the state has a lot of control over, and they generally don't let the counties do anything except for local zoning requirements. Medical cannabis is a good example of that. You have a lot of licensing requirements, the only thing the county can control is zoning. Now, this provision that Ms. Lacy has pointed out is drifting away from zoning into actual operations, and it's in direct conflict with the state statute. And one of the things, well, there's really two legal points here. One of them is the express language, which is, the subheading on this code section that Ms. Lacy referred to as "preemption of local law." So, it's pretty clear, the intent there is to preempt local law regarding operations. The second component is that, under the county's original grant of authority under the Express Powers Act, there's an exception that the county may not pass any law regarding licensing, regulating, prohibiting, or submitting to referendum manufacture or sale of alcoholic beverages. So, I think both of those provisions make it pretty clear that we're really relegated to the traditional type of zoning, zoning district setbacks, things like that, versus saying when you can operate, and especially when, under state law, you've got this 12, you know, they have a certain framework that they have said, this is what you can do, and we're saying, you can't do it. That's a conflict, and that would be preempted. So, even if this code section were not excised from, from the bill, the Office of Planning and Zoning nor the Office of Law would be able to enforce those provisions because of that preemption.
And you said that the, the express powers say that we can't regulate the manufacture or sale of alcohol, alcoholic beverages. This is talking about the number of events that they can have a year, right?
For sale, though.
Okay. So, that's how you get there, is through, because it's an event for sale, or?
Well, the Express Powers Act, I think, gives more of an overall intent, that the state is the one who's controlling alcoholic beverages. This provision, though, is very express. It says the counties can't infringe on the rights that a licensee has under the state statute.
Okay.
Typically, I mean, often, we can be stricter than state law, but not in this instance because of that express preemption language.
All right, thank you.
You're up.
Councilwoman here, and then Ms. Radvian.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm, because I, I have not looked at the state code personally. Did I hear correctly that even under the state code, there's a limit of 12 events? Yes, okay. Thank you. And what about the, I'm sorry, the, the festivals that is permitted or not permitted? Because I think this affects, paragraph 5 and 6, right?
I don't recall the number that are permitted, but they are permitted under state code, so we cannot completely ban them.
Okay. But even with this amendment, this is not like a seven days a week, 365 days a year kind of event, it's still going to be limited?
Well, as far as events, yes, but if you read the entirety of section 2-210, it, it's because of the structure. A licensee, just like your driver's license, you, it comes with the privilege to be able to use that license every day of the week. So, a brewery owner can operate their business every day of the week.
Yes, but for the special events.
And they could invite the public, and they could come and visit, I mean, on the days that are specified from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. That's what's in the state law. But as far as promotional events and multi-brewery activities, those are under separate provisions.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Fiedler? I'm sorry.
They can get, one of these events, the promotional events, can be a three-day license, and according to the Comptroller's Office, they don't, they could have them three days, back-to-back, back-to-back, back-to-back. They're not restricted to any day or any, anything other than the operating hours. They can have them, you know, in theory, they could say it's Oktoberfest, and just have one, one three-day license after the next until they've used their 12 for that year, that license year, and that's what it runs as.
Okay. But to my understanding, whether we pass this amendment or not, that's, that's the law, it is what it is?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Fiedler?
To anyone's knowledge, with the current existing farm breweries that we have, are they exceeding the six event restriction at this time?
We have none that have come forth yet.
There, there are no farm breweries. Part of that, I think, was a function of the ingredient requirements that existed in the code till very recently. No one had signed up because they said the ingredient requirements were difficult to do, so it's been changed, so.
And I just, I want to reiterate my statements that I, I am concerned that this is a move to push farm breweries to a special exception in R1, and I think that that is wholly unfair because, again, we have farm wineries who have extremely limited restrictions when compared to farm breweries, so I will not be supporting this amendment.
Any further discussion on this amendment? Okay, we're going to call the question. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 2.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative, Amendment Number 2 is adopted.
Okay, this bill will be heard on Monday, May 6. Moving along, Bill Number 1619. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1619.
Bill Number 1619, An Ordinance Concerning Cape Anne Special Community Benefit District Approval of Loan Agreement.
Okay, Mr. Barron?
Good evening, Pete Barron, Office of the County Executive. With me is Ms. Adabo from the Budget Office, and Ms. Bray from Office of Law. Bill 1619 approves a levy of the Cape Anne Special Community Benefit District. The assessment is necessary to repay a loan in the amount of $60,000 over the next five years to fund the replacement of an existing community peer on the community property. Just one note, and we did discuss this bill in the work session, just, I think it's important to note, this is not creating a new special community benefit district, it's simply approving a levy of the existing SCBD so that the community can repair their, their community peer. The folks at the table with me are here to help answer any questions.
Ms. Hare?
Sure, this is in District 7, so I'll just, really quickly, and actually, the president of the HOA for Cape Anne is here. If I say anything incorrect, please hop up and let me know. This money, the peer that they have, the community-owned peer, is sort of past its serviceable life, past its safe life, really, and they would like to replace it. To my understanding, at the last, they've actually had to vote on this twice, because the first time, there was some question about the ownership of land along, along the water, and both times when they voted on it at their community meetings, it received unanimous support. So, I am very happy to support this, and I, I hope that all of my colleagues will join me in supporting it.
We're now going to open the public hearing on Bill 1619. Remarks going to be limited to two minutes. We do have Mr. Donahue to come forward. And as you're walking forward, your name and address, and two minutes, sir.
George Donahue, I'm president of the Cape Anne Citizen Association. My address is 5717 Bayview Parkway in Churchston, Maryland. I really just came to answer any questions that may come up that, that my good councilwoman can't answer, but I think she can answer them, so I'm really just here to observe. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Donahue. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else who did not sign up, wish to speak on 1619? The public hearing on Bill Number 1619 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1619.
Bill Number 1619, An Ordinance Concerning Cape Anne Special Community Benefit District Approval of Loan Agreement.
Seeing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 1619.
Ms. Radman.
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 1619 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1719.
Bill Number 1719, An Ordinance Concerning Public Works Utilities Allocation of Water and Wastewater Capacity.
Mr. Barron and the crew, whenever you're ready.
That's my new band name. Evening. Pete Barron with the Office of the County Executive. With me, from the Department of Public Works, is Mr. Phipps and Ms. Campbell, and from Law, Ms. Kelly Kenny. 1719 clarifies that assessed and accumulated interest on capital facility connection charges is payable upon relinquishment or lapse of water or sewer allocation. If you recall, we discussed this piece of legislation in the work session. When the code was modified to allow for the relinquishment of water and sewer allocation due to a project's reconfiguration or any other reason, the restocking fee was eliminated. However, it was an oversight, we believe, that no provisions were made to address accrued interest. We're unable to quantify the exact total number, a total amount of future fiscal impact. However, and I think it's in the blue note, the, the recent requests for relinquishment show an estimated loss of about, significant, it's about $1 million. So, DPW anticipates more of these requests in the future, and so we would like to correct the code before more requests are made. The folks at the table with me are, are happy to answer any of the tough questions.
Councilwoman Hare?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So, this bill, if I go back and look at Code 13-5-403, charges and fees for property subject to adequate public facilities, it looks to me that right now, when you receive an allocation or reservation in conjunction with the approval from Office of Planning and Zoning, there's actually two different ways that you can pay. You can either pay quarterly from the date of allocation, or you can pay half the quarterly and defer the rest. And if you opt for option two, where you pay half of the quarterly and defer the rest, you, you do pay interest. But if you opt for option one, and you just pay quarterly from the date of allocation, there is no interest charge. Is that accurate?
I believe so. Is that correct?
Yes. Okay. So, my concern with this bill is that on the refund side, there's no distinction between the two. So, someone who has paid quarterly all along and would not be subject to interest, if they then have an allocation lapse, they're actually getting charged interest that they otherwise would never pay, even if they eventually went through with that connection. It seems to me like we need to be on the back end with the refunds. We need to be treating people who pay quarterly versus people who defer some the same way that we do when we charge them. Doesn't that make sense?
So, let me just explain the, and clarify, those are two different revenues that, that we're discussing here. What you're referring to is what's called the allocation reservation charge. So, when someone gets, the developer gets allocated a capacity and the plant doesn't yet connect, they are paying that reservation charge to offset the, the impact to the operating budget, because we have to have the manpower, people power, we have to have the chemicals, we have to have the, a building of that size necessary to have issued that allocation. So, that revenue goes into the operating budget, whereas the interest related to the capital facility connection charge goes into the debt service fund budget. So, there, there are two different, two different revenues going to two different purposes. So, that's why you can't conflate the two.
But we, but we separate them on the front end, so we ought to separate them on the back end. I guess my, my point is that if, if I seek a reservation and I, and it's going to cost me $100, let's say, that's the, the fee every quarter, and I can either pay that $100 every quarter and pay no interest, or I can pay $50 every quarter, defer the other 50, and pay interest on that, that second half. And then if I lower the number of units on the back end, I'm getting charged interest no matter whether I paid the full 100 or whether I deferred $50 of it. There's no, it, it doesn't make any sense to me to charge somebody interest that they wouldn't have to pay if they built the house. If you're going to charge somebody interest when they build the house, and you want to charge them when they don't build the house, fine. But if, if they're paying upfront and there's no interest charge, why are we deducting interest on the back end?
Well, we're not charging them interest if they pay, if they build the house. If they get issued a permit within the six-year timeframe, then they're not paying any interest, because it's not accrued. It's not, on the capital facility connection charge, which is the subject of this bill, the allocation reservation charge is a wholly separate charge that's, that's assessed on their use, it's as if they were paying into the usage, as if they were connected to the system, and we have to have all of the fixed operating assets in place to have issued that allocation. So, it's, it's a separate and distinct revenue, supporting a separate and distinct purpose.
Okay, maybe, maybe I'm not understanding. When you, this, this talks about, the first piece on this is receiving an allocation, and that that person has to pay the allocation reservation charge. You're telling me that if somebody gets a refund on the allocation reservation charge that they've already paid in full, they're not paying interest on it?
They're not getting a refund on the allocation reservation charge.
Ever, if they don't build the house?
No, because we've had to reserve that capacity, whether they've relinquished it or not. While they've, while it's been reserved, we have to cover our operating budget demands to fix, fix costs.
Okay, so it's only the capital facility connection charge that gets the refund ever?
Correct.
That's, okay. All right. So, I just misread it. Okay. And every capital, anyone who, if I go and get a, I guess, I'm going to, I get an allocation for 20 units, and I pay the reservation fee for all of that, but ultimately, the building, and ultimately, the building permit is for 20, 20 units. Do I pay interest on the capital connection fee for all of those 20 units?
If you can, if you are issued your building permit after six years, yes.
After six years? Okay. So, if it's in the first, five?
Before that, you don't, you don't pay.
There's no interest.
There's no interest accrued.
Okay. Similarly, under this refund based on a lapse, if, if it, if that lapse happens in the first five years, or the change happens, and they lower it from 20 units to 15 units, do you, the, they would not pay interest on the lapsed piece either? Is that correct?
Correct, because there's no interest accrued or assessed.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry for so many questions. I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Radman?
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, it's on the microphone.
Okay, any other discussion? Anything the administration would like to add? Public hearing. Now open 16, 16, I'm sorry, 1719 for public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Anyone would like to come forward? Okay, seeing no new, no movement in the audience, no one signed up. Any further discussion? Public hearing on Bill Number 1719 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1719.
Bill Number 1719, An Ordinance Concerning Public Works Utilities Allocation of Water and Wastewater Capacity.
Okay, seeing no further discussion. Madam Secretary, please, please call the roll on Bill Number 1719.
Ms. Radman?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay. Oh, aye, sorry.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 1719 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1819.
Bill Number 1819, An Ordinance Concerning Public Works Utilities Charges and Assessments for Water and Wastewater.
Mr. Barron?
Good evening, Pete Barron, Office of the County Executive. With me is Mr. Phipps and Ms. Campbell from Department of Public Works, and Ms. Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. Bill 1819 was also discussed at the work session. It simplifies and revises financing options to reduce long-term interest rate for capital facility connection charges and user connection charges on improved residential property connecting to water and sewer. This bill proposes that all or some of the charges can be financed over 30 years at the bond rate, which will make connecting to the public system more affordable for existing residential property owners. It's important to note, this is not for new development. This is to get folks onto the public system and make it more affordable for them to hook up, which has all sorts of benefits environmentally and for the homeowners.
Councilwoman Hare?
I just want to say, I'm excited about this. We've spoken before about sanitary sewer. Mr. Phipps, I know we've spoken before about sanitary sewer, so anything that makes it easier and more affordable, I'm very excited about. Thank you.
It's a good bill. Okay, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, sorry. Councilwoman Lacy?
Thank you. I wasn't able to attend the last work session, but I wanted to echo Councilwoman Hare's comments. I know there are a lot of people in District 1 who would like to be able to reduce pollution that comes from their septic tanks, and they just can't afford it. So, I think this is fantastic and well done.
Thank you. Now, we will go to a public hearing on Bill 1819. I do not see anyone sign up. Is anyone would like to come forward to speak on 1819? All right, seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 1819 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1819.
Bill Number 1819, An Ordinance Concerning Public Works Utilities Charges and Assessments for Water and Wastewater.
Okay, seeing no further discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 1819.
Ms. Radman?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 1819 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 1919.
Bill Number 1919, An Ordinance Concerning Purchasing Procurement Minimum Bid Limits.
Okay, the administration?
Good evening again. Pete Barron with the County Executive. With me at the table from Central Services is Ms. Romans and Mr. Heim, and from Office of Law, Ms. Klausmeyer. If you will recall, in the previous election in 2018, the citizens of the county approved ballot question 2B. This question passed by 76 percent. Bill 19, 19 finalizes and enacts what the voters approved. It increases the minimum bid threshold in the county code from $250,000 from $25,000. The, the county still has its competitive process, and folks here at the table would be happy to answer any technical questions. But I just want to reiterate that this issue was before the voters, and that it was approved overwhelmingly. We could all hope for a 76 percent victory.
All right, we'll open this up for public hearing, 1919. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 1919 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 1919.
Bill Number 1919, An Ordinance Concerning Purchasing Procurement Minimum Bid Limits.
Okay, seeing that there's no lights on, no further discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 1919.
Ms. Radman?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 1919 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2019.
Bill Number 2019, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Tattoo Parlors and Body Piercing Salons.
Ms. Radman's the sponsor?
So, I basically view this bill as a, a way to get unnecessary obstacles out of the way for small business owners who are trying to do something special and unique, and I think cool, in their business. It creates a very small window by allowing businesses in a business complex to have as an auxiliary use tattooing. And it's very, it's very small, can't be more than 50 percent of the floor area of the business, and no more than 25,000 square feet. I described this at the, at the work session. If you can imagine the jewelry store that you might have shopped at when you were a little kid, Claire's had always a little station to get your ears pierced, and I view this something, that same sort of model, just, you know, in different combination, in this case, for artists who are doing some cool work.
Great. Administration, anything to add?
The administration has no opposition.
Okay, we will open this up for a public hearing. Anyone would like to come and speak on 2019? I do believe we had a few folks on the, sign up. Ms. Lisa Rowe, Mr. Chris Rowe, Mr. Dan Staven?
Staven.
Staven, thank you, sir. And Aaron, Mr. Aaron Weaver, if you all will come forward. And Ms. Rowe, once you sit down, you can state your name and address in two minutes, and then we'll go through the panel.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Lisa Rowe, 1048 Plum Creek Drive, Crownsville, Maryland. I am the wife of an artist who would like to be able to do all of the forms of his artwork under one roof. Tattooing is a protected, under the First Amendment, freedom of speech, and this bill would encourage the reduction of, like, black market, sort of, in-home tattoo artist-type things. Just because they'll be allowed in C1, in 50 percent of the real estate being used, doesn't mean that it, they're going to pop up everywhere. I think some, in some places, there still is a stigma, but I'm a mother of two, I have two jobs, I'm a real estate agent, I'm married to a tattoo artist, and I'm pretty conservative. We were told over and over again by zoning that it was outdated. We were fully supported by zoning, as a matter of fact. A very high-up person helped Councilwoman Radman write this bill. We suggested some additional limitations, however, I mean, I think space is, is great. It is an art form, photography, tattooing. We were not looking to go any further with that. And it's, we're not a harmful influence in the community. We are a positive one, and we help people cover scars and, from their past or illnesses, and we would like the opportunity to do that in our community in a very small way. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rowe?
My name's Chris Rowe. My address is 1048 Plum Creek Drive, Crownsville, Maryland, 21032. And I would just like to say, tattooing is a $1.65 billion industry today. It is the sixth-largest growing industry in America, with over 22,000 studios in the USA. Tattooing is more mainstream today than ever, with clients from all walks of life. Forty-two to 46 percent of Americans have at least one tattoo, and many of us artists have art degrees. The previous council set precedence allowing a form of tattooing into C1 with microblading. Microblading fits the definition of tattooing. It's insertion of a pigment under the skin. They approved that for C1, not as an auxiliary use, which is what we're asking for, but as a permitted use by itself. That's, that's all that I have, other than I would be more than willing to address any concerns that the council has. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Staven?
My name's Dan Staven. My address is 1156 Wickford Court, Crofton, Maryland. Mr. Chairman and councilmembers, I, I am a, an attorney, and I have come into contact with Mr. and Mrs. Rowe. And I, I believe that if they can convince me it's okay for, for people to have tattoos in this kind of auxiliary use, I believe that they could, they could support anyone. In fact, what we found in this group is that we found a camaraderie, a family of sorts, that, you know, shouldn't have to go to other, other areas when we have friends, in fact, that, you know, shouldn't have to go to other, other areas when we have friends, in fact, that do this type of service. And, you know, prior, prior to this hearing, I probably would have been embarrassed to say that, but I'm not embarrassed to stand up here for one of my friends to support them. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Weaver?
Thank you. Aaron Weaver, address 790 Paul Birch Drive, Crownsville, Maryland, 21032. I've been there 19 years. I've been an Anaronda County resident my entire life, with the exception of a quick tour in Germany for the army. I'm a personal friend of Chris. I'm a client, and he's done work for my employer as a photography artist. He's done work for my family as a photography artist. He's done artistic work on my family. I gave him, well, I gave my wife permission to, I gave him permission to, to practice art on my wife. That came out weird, but she gave me permission to be here tonight.
That's clear for the record.
I see this as a, as a, as a way to perform an artistic idea, and, and most of my art is either faith-based, or, and all my wife's art is faith-based. And we see this as an expression of how we can actually be unique and identify in a, in a trendy, cool way. So, thanks, that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Great, you all are dismissed. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward to speak on 2019? I see Ms. Johnson and another gentleman. If you'd come forward, please. And as you're doing so, we'll have, Madam Secretary, we'll give you a sheet to sign in.
Okay.
State your name, address, in two minutes.
My name's Joseph Lynch. My address is 413 Kyle Road, Crownsville, Maryland, ZIP Code 21032. First, I'd like to beg the county's indulgence for my attire this, this evening. It was a little bit rushed getting out of the house. I didn't realize where I was going when I came. So, please forgive me for my, I intend no disrespect for flannel shirt. That being said, I'd also like to point out that I am probably, in some days, the stereotype you'd think of when you think of a tattoo parlor. I'm, I ride a motorcycle. I'm a combat veteran. I have tattoos. My friends are all tattooed. I probably have the least number of tattoos of all my friends. I'm, I'm very close with, with the Rose, have been very close in watching this business develop as, as it goes forward. I am a small business owner myself, and have run into obstacles that I bore the county, the council with regarding the operations of my business, but understand how frustrating obstacles such as these that are, that are almost administrivia. The, the zoning barriers they're running into are barriers that, well, first and foremost, didn't exist initially, and then are ultimately barriers that are not only affecting Mr. Rowe's business, but they're affecting his landlord's business, and that his landlord can now not make money from, from the operations that Mr. Rowe could make in that, in that location. I know it is also affecting favorably other businesses in his, in that strip mall, that community. Other businesses are getting, now getting customer foot traffic from his, from Mr. Rowe's customers. Because I don't know if you've ever had a tattoo, it's not a five-minute experience. In fact, there are some times when you break for lunch, and, and I know S&amp;K Subs right next door is very grateful for the fact that they break for lunch time. So, given that what we are discussing is actually a protected form of art, so the First Amendment clearly protects that form of art.
Please summarize it.
Thank you. That's enough of a summary. Please, please support this, this motion.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Hi, Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis. The world has changed, and tattoo art is certainly experiencing a major resurgence. When I was a little girl, there were a lot of men coming back from World War II who had a lot of tattoos. And, you know, because this was part of the camaraderie of the military, well, the battle experience, and it was a very important thing psychologically. But one of the things I saw among my parents' friends and neighbors was that as folks got older, they didn't have those shapely muscles anymore. And the spectacular artistry sort of wasn't as spectacular, if you know what I'm struggling to say, you know, and the skin sags, and the wrinkles come in, and the pigments faded in those days. I presume they're better now. But then there were all, there was this secondary industry that exploded of removing the tattoos. But I'll just tell you one story that you may be familiar with, the magazine artist who worked for Look Magazine from Massachusetts. And here, on the cover story, or the cover cartoon, here's your military guy, T-shirt, and here's the tattoo artist. And first is Maria, line drawn through, Eloise, Antoinette, each one with a line drawn through. And so, you know, I can't help but shake, I can't shake that. And so, the, what I guess I'm trying to say is that, you know, I hope that people understand that the artistry should be, I mean, some of these things, some of the artistry that's being performed today is spectacular. It truly is an art form. It is museum quality. On the other hand, if you want to get rid of it, it's expensive, and I, and I, and is there, you know, you know, are you talking about the hazards and costs of removal?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I don't see any further movement in the crowd. The public hearing on Bill Number 2019 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2019.
Bill Number 2019, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Tattoo Parlors and Body Piercing Salons.
Okay, I don't see any further discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 2019.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 2019 is passed.
Congratulations. Bill Number 2119 was withdrawn earlier, moving along the agenda. Resolution 1219. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 1219.
Resolution Number 1219, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anaronda Community College Funding.
Mr. Barron and the crew?
Good evening again. Good evening again. Pete Barron, County Executive's Office. With me at the table is Ms. Klausmeyer from Office of Law, and Ms. Beardmore from the Community College. As you may recall, we passed a resolution back in December related to the funding of the Health Sciences and Biology Building. Resolution 1219 conveys to the Maryland Higher Ed Commission, Anaronda County Community College petition for funding in the amount of $8,354, and, and, $8,354,529. Sorry, it's been a long wait. For the construction and management at the, for Phase 2A of the Health Sciences and Biology Building. We need to set, submit this resolution to the Maryland Department of General Services. This is the state's process for seeking its share of funding for community college projects. With me at the table, the folks will be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, seeing no questions, we're going to open this up for public hearing. Resolution 1219. If there's anyone that'd like to come forward, I do not have anybody listed. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution Number 1219 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1219.
Resolution Number 1219, Resolution Concerning a Petition to the Maryland Higher Education Commission for Anaronda Community College Funding.
Okay, seeing no further discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 1219.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 1219 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 1319.
Resolution Number 1319, Resolution Appointing a Member to the Anaronda County Ethics Commission.
Mr. Barron?
Peter Barron, Office of the County Executive. With me at the table is Ms. Klausmeyer. Resolution 1319 reappoints Ms. Vanessa Carter to the County Ethics Commission. As you will recall, this is the council's nominee to the commission. There was a resolution a few weeks back nominating her. The county executive is bringing this down for the official appointment.
Okay, public hearing. Anyone like to come forward to speak on Resolution 1319? I do not see anyone on the chart. Seeing no movement in the crowd. Public hearing on Resolution Number 1319 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 1319.
Resolution Number 1319, Resolution Appointing a Member to the Anaronda County Ethics Commission.
Okay, no further discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll of Resolution 1319.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 1319 is adopted.
Resolution Number 1419. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 1419.
Resolution Number 1419, Resolution Confirming Nominations to the Board of Trustees of the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anaronda County Incorporated.
Mr. Barron?
Good evening. Peter Barron, Office of the County Executive. With me at the table is Ms. Klausmeyer. Resolution 1419 confirms the nominations of William Shorter, Joseph Sapp, Mary Catherine Belcher, and Leslie Anderson to the Board of Trustees for the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anaronda County. The positions are currently vacant. These positions are for members of the Board of Trustees from Councilmatic Districts 2, 3, 7, and an at-large member.
Okay, any immediate questions? We'll open this up for public hearing. Anyone like to come forward and speak on Resolution 1419? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing, Resolution Number 1419 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of this Resolution Number 1419.
Can I, point of order?
I'm sorry.
Report of information. I just noticed, I think in line 19 of the resolution, it says Districts 2, 3, and 5. Is that correct? It should be 2, 3, and 7, right?
Do we need a technical amendment for that?
It should be 2, 3, and 7. That's correct.
I move to amend the resolution to correct the technical error.
We're going to have to get an amendment drawn up.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. But why don't we second that to make sure it moves forward? Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, it gets it right further down in the resolution.
Okay.
You just, you want to just come back while we get the amendment, or do you want to wait?
We can. The next one is 1519, so.
Are we allowed to pass 1519 or do this?
Thank you all for your patience. Madam Secretary, could you please read Amendment Number 1 to Resolution 1419?
Amendment Number 1, this technical amendment corrects a district designation in the resolution.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this motion? Okay, Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Amendment Number 1?
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, I believe we can vote on this. Resolution 1419, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 1419 is adopted.
Okay, is there any other business to be brought for the county council? Yes, Resolution 1519. I would like to read from our rules. If you look at Section 5106, Residing Resolutions, Consideration, Number E, Timelim for Consideration, a resolution other than one of appointment, sympathy, congratulations, or similar subject may be considered, act upon less than seven days after date of introduction, except by suspension of the rules. Ms. Tate, did you want to add anything to that, or?
No, the, the motion that was discussed earlier tonight revolved around the order of the meeting, and now we can proceed with both of these resolutions today because they are not subject to that waiting period.
So, we would move forward with each resolution separately?
Yes. Hear and vote on each.
Point of pro, would you please repeat what that rule is that you're referring to? Sorry.
It is Section 506, E. It's on page 23.
This, Section E, reading it again, a resolution other than one of appointment, sympathy, congratulations, or a similar subject, may not be considered or acted on less than seven days after its date of introduction, except by suspension of these rules. This rule, of course, is confusing because it seems to have a double negative implied. Now, I think we would all agree that Resolution Number 1519 is one of appointment, whereas Resolution 1619 is not, and therefore, we must move to suspend the rules in order to hear and consider and vote on Resolution Number 16, but not Number 15.
Ms. Tate?
I'll just say, as far as Resolution 16 goes, the way this is styled is a request from the county council, and we have done those as an administrative matter without the seven-day waiting period. So, therefore, you know, I'll leave it to the council, but in the past, we have done directives from the county council with less than seven days, since we are seeking information for the county auditor for them to use as part of a legislative function. So, with that, I'll leave it to the council.
Can we proceed with 1519, though? Madam Secretary, could you please read the title of Resolution 1519?
Resolution 1519, Resolution Appointing Members to the Anaronda County Gun Violence Prevention Task Force.
All right, and Ms. Pickard and I spoke earlier. Along, any of the other co-sponsors like to add any additional information? Ms. Lacy, did you want to add anything?
No, sorry.
Yep. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 1519.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Nay.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Resolution Number 1519 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 1619.
Resolution Number 1619, Resolution Urging the County Executive to Respond to a Request for Documentation from the County Auditor.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Pardon me, a motion to approve? I'm sorry, I don't understand what motion is being made.
A motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt?
A motion to adopt the resolution?
One, the motion is to hear it and have discussion for the council, and then move forward to vote. So, that is the motion that you're going to be considering.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm just terribly confused, but if we do not use the words "motion to suspend," I think it's very confusing what we're fully doing here. Can we not use an abbreviation so we can make it clear, please?
Well, I don't, I didn't know whether anyone had made a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll just rely on my previous comments. So, whether it is, if you want to proceed with it...
Can I just ask? I think earlier...
Is there a point of order here?
Go ahead.
I think earlier you were saying we don't need a motion to suspend the rules because this can be treated as one of an administrative function that falls under the similar.
Well, that is, I would, this is how I would characterize this resolution. We've done resolutions like this before, where it's been a request from the administration, where there has not been the waiting period described in the county council's rules. Now, what I said was, that's been past practice. If the council prefers to have a motion to suspend the rules, to consider this tonight, I'll leave that to the chair and to the other members.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Under Section 2104 of the Rules of Procedure for the County Council, Section B3, it notes that the Legislative Council shall assist the chair of the council and act as parliamentarian at legislative sessions and public hearings of the council. I would suggest to the Mr. Chair that the parliamentarian is Ms. Tate, and as a result, she would make the decision on whether or not this is appropriate, under the rules to be voted on tonight or not.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Lacy?
Rule 5106E says, "A resolution other than one of appointment, sympathy, congratulations, or similar subject." And while I certainly understand and am willing to defer to appropriate past precedent, I don't think it's appropriate in the case of a new council. I don't agree that the, that the wording here implies administrative. That has no necessary connection to one of appointment. This, this resolution goes well beyond appointment. And while I, I don't disagree that we need to be able to exercise oversight authority over what is happening with the auditor process, I don't in any way disagree with that. I do strongly disagree that this resolution is appropriate to do without a vote to suspend the rules. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ms. Tate, can we go back and do suspend the rules, and if that fails, this is heard at the next meeting? Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion?
Mr. Chair? Thank you. I, I would just urge my colleagues to recognize the time delay that is happening here. We are effectively talking about information that is necessary and has been requested by the auditor all the way back in February. And the idea that this is somehow premature or not right, frankly, this motion probably would have been right six weeks ago, two months ago. But here we are, on the cusp of the budget, and we don't have the information. And regardless of whether previous administrations have done this or not, that doesn't make it right. And this is a new council with a new county executive that has an opportunity to do things correctly. We were all elected effectively as change agents for this county. I don't think anyone can deny that. So, when we are having this discussion about doing things the appropriate way and setting the correct guardrails, if you will, for what the institutional power of the county council vis-à-vis the county executive should be, I, I feel like this is a no-brainer for this council to say, "We are insisting that you, county executive, administration, et cetera, provide us this information so that our county auditor can do her job." That, that's the purpose of this resolution, and I would ask that my colleagues sincerely consider whether or not voting against this keeps in accordance with the mandate that I believe many of us were elected to come down here and provide to this counting.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilwoman Lacy?
I never apologize for bringing my brains with me when I come to the dais, and I believe we all do that. We all sincerely endeavor to do what we think is best, based on our reading of the law. I also think the law provides that, we can all read Charter, Section 311, I believe it is, that says that the books and papers and accounts of the administration are open to inspection, essentially, quite a paraphrase, but our auditor has that power. That does not mean that it is appropriate for us to read into the other limitation in the charter regarding what the subject of a resolution may be, which is also a subject we've previously addressed. This isn't one that fits in a resolution. It's not that nature, and it also has no actual power. I think we've done enough by this discussion to highlight that, yes, there are problems and issues that need to be resolved, but this resolution actually has no legal power to make anything happen faster, to provide information in forms that work for Madam Auditor. And so, the more productive conversation that we can have is going to be separate and apart from this resolution, and I urge my colleagues to vote against it.
I'm sorry.
We still have the suspension?
Correct.
That's, we're having a debate on that.
Any, any further discussion on this suspension of the rule motion? Madam Secretary, can you please read the roll?
For clarification, I am taking the roll on a motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution 1619.
That is correct.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. A motion to suspend the rules to vote on Resolution 1619 is defeated.
Resolution 1619 will be heard at the next meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. County council's enjement till May 1st, 2019, for the budget hearing at 11:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. for council deliberations. Thank you, and have a good evening.